So we have to do the treasurer thing.
We will now call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of a treasurer pro tem, Mary Cleveland.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded.
You can call for the roll.
Okay, are you going to call the roll Gina? We have to vote.
Oh, I have to?
Well, we all do.
Okay, do I call for that? All right, Jody Kessler?
Yes.
Mary Cleveland?
Yes.
John Simons?
Yes.
And Susan Wyder?
Yes, motion passes. Mrs. Cleveland will serve as our pro tem treasurer. Now we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
We've got to have roll call. Mr. Roll Call.
Well, we can pledge allegiance and then she can roll call.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, Mrs. Cleveland, would you call the roll?
Call it.
Oh, Mrs. Wyder?
Here.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland, Mrs. Moore?
Yes, here.
And Mrs. Kessler?
Here.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Next is a motion for the approval or revision of the agenda. Gina, did you want something changed?
I'd like to make a motion to revise the agenda by pulling out item number G, approval of revision to Administrative Employee Handbook 2022.
Is there a second?
Second for purposes of discussion.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Mrs. Cleveland, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Is there, Mrs. Wyder, do you want discussion?
We have the discussion.
If there was discussion.
Okay.
Is there a discussion on the motion?
Is there any discussion on the motion?
No discussion?
No. No. I'm writing, I didn't even hear what you guys are doing.
Okay, so G was removed from the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And moved second. And so now we're at the discussion part and there's no discussion.
Okay, so what do we need to know?
We need to know where G is moved to. Is it moved to discussion?
Well, Mr. Simons, very quickly, so there was no discussion, so then it goes to vote to see if it actually would get moved or still stay in there weren't passed.
Yes.
So then we just need a roll call.
Okay, so there is no discussion?
Uh-uh.
Okay, Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
The motion wants to remove it from the consent.
That's what we're voting on right now.
I'm saying yes.
Right. Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Now, are we moving it to another part of the agenda?
Mrs. Moore?
Um, I really didn't want to vote on it tonight. That's why I asked it to come out of the consent decree.
So I moved that.
The consent agenda.
Huh?
I was saying I wanted to come out of the consent agenda because I wanted to look deeper into it.
But we should have had that at the, with the discussion part before we voted Gina. Now we got to put it in, into.
It doesn't have to be voted on tonight, does it?
Well, school starts in, what, how many days?
This week.
So they don't want to start it without a handbook, I believe.
The handbook passes.
I moved to, move item G, which was formerly in the consent agenda, to district business so that we may have a robust discussion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second. It has been moved and seconded.
I didn't hear, what was your?
G, I moved that we moved it to district business.
To district business, okay.
Yeah, under item four, that'll be item four, it'll become E.
So that we can discuss it.
So that we can discuss.
Okay, so it'll be E, got it. Are we, okay. Can I call the roll?
Yeah.
I didn't hear her say it. Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland, yes. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Okay, so it's moved now to item E, under district business.
There are no visitors.
I'm sorry, I don't want this to slide on the floor.
Okay, hand them here.
So we're at recognitions right now, and while there's nothing in there, I do have a couple to talk about.
Okay.
Is that okay?
You have the floor.
Thank you very much. So I don't know if, you know, many of these are already put on social media, but we're really excited about the fact that our national NJROTC recognized one of only 20 units in the country, so that was a huge honor. So congratulations to the entire program, that's amazing. We also had Jordan Ederington who was highlighted at one of the board meetings. And I also had Viking Voices, and during Viking Voices he talked about his summer baseball team he was playing on, and they won the World Series, which is a huge honor. On top of that, fresh off the presses, we have three students that will participate in the Field of Dreams right before the Cincinnati Reds play. So let me be accurate with who they are very quickly. So we have 10th grader Declan McGrath, excuse me, McGrath, junior Jacque Vasquez, and 9th grader Blake Dayton. So that's huge, and they'll all take part in the Reds RBI team, which is a huge, huge honor. On top of that also, our middle school was honored with another community award, the second time they received that, I believe. So congratulations to the middle school as well, I see Dr. Maxim out here, so Dr. Maxim, congratulations to you and your staff. You know, so digging into that program, it was really fascinating because that is actually voted on by parents and other people that have had experience at the middle school. So that would not have taken place unless there's a really good feel with what's going on at the middle school. So again, congratulations. Also Dawn Bailey this summer has recognized as Principal of the Year in the Doctor Class Program, so we'll recognize all these people at another board meeting. And just wanted to make sure, there's so much stuff going on. The Tri-County Music Honor Society was named Ohio Chapter of the Year, so that's a really big honor, again, for the music department. But essentially, to go back to the, let me give you the exact name, it's a Family Choice Awards through Cincinnati Magazine. And they put out nomination forms, the top eight get voted on, and that's how we won for the second time. So again, congratulations there. The NJROTC was awarded Unit Achievement Award, which is presented only to the top 20 programs in the country. And again, we talked about Andrew Ederington. Again, he's part of the Midland Redskins team, so again, congratulations to Andrew. And also, huge recognition goes to not only Lincoln Heights Elementary School, but the entire Lincoln Heights Village. I don't know if you guys saw some of those pictures, it's amazing, 480 volunteers, it's the largest Cincinnati Reds Foundation program they ever had. It was unbelievable, the amount of people that were there. And they dodged some rain and all that, but they did programs at the Health Connections, at the Village, at the field, at Lincoln Heights Elementary School, at St. Monica's, and I believe a couple other places too. So that was amazing, all worthy of a little bit of time at the board meeting to recognize them, so thank you.
And it was pretty swell that Dawn Bailey got to throw out the opening pitch at a Reds game in preparation for that. And she did an amazing job. Okay, we're through the consent agenda. Next is district business. First is approval of the.
We haven't done the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to approve the consent agenda.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland, can you call the roll?
Did we have a first and a second? Huh? No.
I moved that we approve the consent agenda as listed, minus item G as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
But just as a point of order, I thought I already had done that. No?
That was revision of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you for keeping us on track.
Well, that's why I mentioned taking G out, because G is still on the memo.
And you see, I checked it, I do that. Okay, next is district business. First is approval of the June 2022 financial report. Is there any discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the June 2022 financial report as presented.
Second.
Who's second?
I seconded. And now, Mrs. Cleveland, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland, yes. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Next is the approval of the service agreement with Allied Construction Industries.
I move to approve the service agreement with Allied Construction Industries as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes, just very quickly, this is part of a grant that we received through the Ohio Department of Education Innovation Workforce. I see Mr. Sendre out there, and he works collaboratively with Innovation Center to get this grant. $233,000 is the first expenditure of it. And the contract itself is for that partnership to start with Allied Construction. Thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Cleveland?
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland, Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Next is approval of varsity and junior varsity fall 2022 boys' water polo overnight and out-of-state matches.
Wouldn't it say?
We're at C.
Oh, I'm sorry. I checked that one before accidentally. The approval of a resolution to authorize the solicitation of professional design services, formation of an evaluation committee.
I move to approve a resolution to authorize the solicitation of professional design services and subsequent formation of an evaluation committee.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this would allow us to be able to go out and first establish an evaluation committee to evaluate bids that we would solicit. So this is a specific format you have to follow when you're talking about design work. I'm talking to Chris Petter, she had made mention before, that's actually a loophole in the law, because typically when you go out and get three quotes and you're good up until a certain level, and this falls well below us having to do anything differently. But the reality is that because of loophole, we have to do this. And then, once the resolution would be passed, then we'd be able to put that out for bid, people would submit, there'd be a ranking system that would happen with each of the bids, and then based upon that, then recommendations would come to the board.
Anything else? Mrs. Cleveland?
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland, yes. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Motion passes. And then, next, and I apologize for before, approval of varsity and junior varsity fall 2022 boys' water polo overnight and out-of-state matches.
I move to approve the varsity and junior varsity fall 2022 boys' water polo overnight and out-of-state matches.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, Mrs. Cleveland?
Mrs. Cleveland, yes. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is E.
Good.
This is the one that was added.
This is the one that was added.
Oh, okay. And which is that?
I.
In G, under the consent agenda.
Okay.
I moved to approve the revision to the Administrative Employee Handbook 2022.
So we're not doing any discussion here, too late, right?
Okay.
No, 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 we got to make a motion.
I get it.
And then, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Cleveland, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Yes, under class one, Director of Security have a 6% pickup that looks like it's new. Can you tell me more about that? I've never heard of that before.
Sure, the 6% pickup is consistent with what we do in all the categories. So, well, different categories have a different level of pickup, but that would be consistent with class one. To start, remember it starts at 6%, and then it scales up. Based upon how many years you're here, so if you're here for two years and it goes 8%, if you're here for four years, it goes to 10, and it would go all the way up to depending upon whether it's STRS or SCRS, whatever the cap would be. And this is one of the things that the board had talked about, I think it was two and a half years ago, Dr. Jameson, three years ago, and this is something to help retain our administrators.
I remember we talked about the position, but I didn't think it would be class one with a 6%. And being at that level, it looks like the Director of Security gets 6% at class one, but the Athletic Director would be 6% at class two. I think it's, but yet the Director of EL Services is class two, but they're not up there with, I just don't understand the percentages, but I'll just have to study more about that. Also, the job description for the Director of Security, it appears that this Director of Security is not required to have any experience at all working in a school or working with children, based on this job description. Is that correct?
We always want that, to have, to have either experience working with children, or in this case, especially this position is so huge, for years and years and years, I've heard here, for seven years specifically, I've heard that it is absolutely critical to know the community. That that was one of the big, the big pushes that, in fact, four of the, or three of the five board members who hired me talked ad nauseam about the fact that I live in the community and that I know the community, and how important it is to know the community. So that, to me, is really, really important for this position, to be able to have relationships in each of the departments you represent, as well as the Southwest region. This person has to have communication with the different departments as they coordinate a variety of programming at this school. And we're very fortunate to, we believe we have somebody who has those unbelievable experiences, on top of the fact those great relationships serving as.
Oh, you've already decided he's going to be the Director of Security? You have someone already for this job?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I thought they were just doing risk management.
No, that, we.
You've named the Director of Security already?
That was a, that was a position.
I thought it was risk, called something else, okay.
Well, it was initially, and then we talked about it being moved, and it was in my board update as well. My special board update.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned that it looks like we're hiring someone who has a police background, but not an education background. And I believe that while it's good to have a police background, the culture of a school and the culture of a police department are two different things. And I would hope that the person in this position could be like a guy named Otis. I don't know Otis' real name, but he was, he did security here at MS, here at the city. I mean, what am I saying? At Princeton for many, many years. And what made him so good at what he did wasn't that he used to be a police officer, it was his people skills and him having a greater understanding of education and valuing what teachers do. So I would just hope that we're going in the right direction here. But this job description, to me, it just doesn't touch on those elements that you mentioned that were important to you, they're not here. I just don't see them. But maybe, you know, I just wanted to have some discussion about that.
Well, Otis was, Otis was really good with the kids too.
He was.
Absolutely.
And we believe wholeheartedly, we have zero hesitation in this person. And we're very fortunate to actually have him, on top of the fact that he has great relationships, he, we believe that he has unbelievable skills dealing with students. He actually comes from Butler Tech, and so he does have that experience. But the biggest thing to me is the fact that year over, year over, year, every board meeting, whatever, you guys trust us to make the decisions with the personnel report. And obviously, if there's things in there, you bring them up, no problem, but the trust that you guys have showed, and I'm going to make it personal for me, over four years of personnel reports, I think this is the first time we ever talked about an item like this. And again, not a bad thing, I'm just saying that there's trust and confidence in this being a day-to-day decision. I think this is really critical, that the board understands that we've done our due diligence, and we feel very good about this item.
Anything else, Gina?
Oh, no.
Anybody else?
I just want to go record and say, when I said, thank you.
Okay, we heard you.
For clarification, who does this gentleman report to?
He reports to me. And I report to the Board of Education.
Has he ever worked at a school before?
Yeah, I just said that.
What school did he work at?
Butler Tech.
Oh, okay.
And in fact, during reference checks, the principal said they loved him, he was great with kids, and they did not want to see him go.
A very diverse school.
I don't know when the last time you were at Butler Tech.
I don't know.
No, the last time I was there, it actually was diverse.
Good, that's good to know.
If I could just add, he also served as a dare officer at Evendale Elementary, so he has been in the community, in the schools. And he's married to a retired Princeton teacher.
That's good news.
And educate, around education.
And at Princeton Longton.
So he lives in the community? That's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Just quickly though, because everybody keeps touching on it, I'm just curious now, since we're talking about it, how much interaction will he have with kids? I mean, just out of curiosity.
He'll be on the floor as well, the middle school, high school, but you know, the biggest thing, again, he's going to overlook and oversee all of the safety and security, and this was actually a big charge that I've heard from each board member, really excited about being able to have a Director of Safety and Security. Remember, Arnold Franklin did a great job last year, there's no question, did it on a stipend. And really, he's still going to support, Arnold's still going to support and do some things specifically in the summer, but he'll be doing work all year round. He's phenomenal, so he's on the floor as well. But the reality is going into the different buildings, and he's going to be out and about, and that was one of the things, I think the board actually talked about earlier, that we wanted to make sure that there was a presence in the buildings, and that was something that he is very vested on, and will make sure that happens. So he'll have experience, he'll interact with kids, there's no question, but there's going to be the oversight, the scheduling, the communication that he's going to need with the different police departments and the sheriff's office.
Right.
As well as setting up different drills and so forth.
Okay, because that's the part I knew about, I wasn't so sure. I remember talking about the interaction with student piece, so now that we're talking about it, again, I just was curious, you know, how much of his job really is going to be about students versus what we've charged you with is making sure our facilities are secure. And then, and I know I had asked before just about the reporting process, but I assume that that will come at some point where we'll start getting reports in terms of what he's doing.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
And what's the salary for this position?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand, it's on the.
It's on, thank you.
Anything else? If not, we will move on to.
We need to vote on it.
We need to.
We need to vote.
I guess I'm always jumping the gun. All right, Mrs. Cleveland?
Okay, Mrs. Cleveland, yes. Mrs. Moore?
No.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Got it.
Motion passes. Now, academic update.
We will be talking about two items tonight. We'll be talking about the transition plan, as we had promised that we would bring to you for the sixth grade, as well, the kindergarten transition plan. I'm gonna actually start with the kindergarten, because I talked specifically about this to our new staff today, which I'll talk about new staff orientation here in a little bit. But since you guys acted at the last board meeting, and I know you heard this today, but for those out in the audience, we had 29 students that literally, when you talk about changing and saving lives and the trajectory of kids, when you're able to double the education they're gonna have, 29 kids went from half-day to full-day because of the commitment of the Board of Education. Because you said you're not gonna pay for the most fundamental education, starting at kindergarten. That was a huge decision, and when you talk about putting your money where your mouth is, A, you did that, and then B, the bigger thing is when you think about this, you may make a decision and not see the impact. This is immediate impact. Now, we'll talk about numbers here in a little bit, but the reality is when you have 29 kids do that, that is huge. So, Tanya, if you're coming up here, I'll pass these out.
All right, we're gonna move on to Slide 12, I believe it should be, which gives a summary that Dr. Fosna and the Welcome Center prepared for us of where we are with full-day kindergarten. So, good evening, everyone. As Mr. Burton said, when we presented to you on July 25th, we had 59 students, I believe, that were enrolled in half-day kindergarten. 29 of those students moved to full-day. So that was a big accomplishment. We currently have only 247 students enrolled in all-day kindergarten, which gives us 78 spaces left in the existing classrooms that we have. And we have 31 students enrolled in half-day across the district, which gives us 194. So as we talked about, the enrollment center and Welcome Center is really busy this week. A lot of our families sometimes wait till this last minute. So these numbers will change each day, but we still have room to give. So as Mr. Burton said, we truly appreciate that. The next two slides were just the numbers on July 25th, and then the numbers as of August 5th, so the next slide, just if you wanted to review what that looks like. And again, we have our first day for kindergarten and preschool on the 15th. They don't start with everyone else, that gives them time to meet the teacher, parents to go into the classrooms. They're doing the orientation on 11th and 12th, and as we know, we have those assessments coming up. And finally, we thank you for approving that paraprofessional support. Dr. Jameson has worked with the principals to get some of those hired already. So the principals were very excited to hear that they would have additional support as soon as possible to help with the class sizes.
Thank you, Tanya. Stay up there in case the Board asks questions, but I just wanna kinda go back to something. When you look at the numbers.
Okay.
And I'm gonna challenge all the parents that are listening right now, we need to push this out again, but this is ridiculous. And I tell you why. We know that parents want their children to be educated. These numbers need to be filled, and they need to be filled right away. So, parents, you need to do your job as parents and get your children registered. Don't wait till after Labor Day, don't do that. If you need help, call me, my phone number is 440-708-4800. Please call me if you need help with the registration process, if you need transportation, anything. This is too important, this is one of the most fundamental jobs and responsibilities as a parent. Education is absolutely critical. And we already know with preschool, which again is a choice that the Board doesn't have to offer, they do, but the reality is every one of the kids that are going to start kindergarten did not have preschool. And because many of our parents, we understand you're working hard and all that, and sometimes you can't put them in different pre-kindergarten or preschool opportunities, so they would come to us without anything other than what you do at home, which may be phenomenal. And you may read every night, but if you're not reading every night or talking to kids about exploratory opportunities and talking to them about ants on the ground and doing research, you have to do that as a parent. And minimally, minimally, get them registered. And get them registered early so that they get education from day one from us. Thank you. Board, have any questions?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Burton. I was gonna ask, Tanya, if this is an exceptionally small class? Because it's looking, what, 350 kids, 325?
Currently, we only have, I think, 280 enrolled. With, it, they just register late. I don't, I anticipate that this will go up to the normal 350, 400 range. People just truly wait until what Mr. Burton is talking about after Labor Day. We just keep getting kids, and then it kinda balances out in September or October. So unfortunately, this is pretty typical of where we stand right before school starts. And that's where we talked about with staffing, sometimes that's why it's hard for us to be able to determine how many teachers we need. Because if we made a decision right now, we would have too many teachers. But if history repeats itself, they're coming, and we'll get between 350 and 400 students. They just haven't enrolled yet.
We'd be glad to talk about this again in September for the first meeting, just to give an update. I'll do that in my report, I'll just give an update of where we are so that you see. Because, you know, the Board of Education, you may have once in a while get a phone call, people may not necessarily be happy. And this is something that parents need to do, they need to step up, and they need to do this. And every single board meeting, you're gonna hear me talk about parents, not love parents. We have unbelievable parents, and we also have parents that need help and support. Let us help you. We are here to help support you while we're educating your beautiful children next to send us. And we're really serious about this. The Board made a huge investment, and, Tanya, if you would please do this, will you please find out how many school districts in greater Cincinnati offer free kindergarten all day? Because this Board did something that very few Boards did before. I'm serious, like, this is not theatrical. I, this really is upsetting to me when we, when the Board makes a decision to put their money where their mouth is and provide this. If we, as a community, don't rally around something like this, why should the Board do it? Thank you.
It looks as if we get up to that 350 mark that just about everyone will have a space available in full-day kindergarten.
And we, but we will have some locations that have hit capacity that if they want the full day, they may have to overflow to another building. So we do have a wait list started at a couple of buildings because their full-day classes are at the capacity side. So that's the only, there'll be, there'll be an opportunity in that building for a half-day, like we talked about it, but if you want full day, there may be, you may have to move a building.
But we do have before and after-school care, is that true?
That is true. Some of the locations that have struggled in the past are still struggling to get the full enrollment, so we're working with transportation to let them attend at another building that has enrollment so that the parents can utilize that at this point. But we do have some buildings that are struggling, and Ms. Dr. Fosna will give an update on that. But they're all coming, they were probably there tonight at Meet the Teacher Night. So we're hoping that we get a big boost in champions at Meet the Teacher Nights, which are happening the next three days. And then those, all those programs can fill up, and they can be at each site and not have to do the buzzing.
You might have touched on this, but All-Day Number One and All-Day Number Two, what's the difference in those two?
Some of the buildings have two full-day teachers, so that just helps the... So we don't put the teacher name, it's just All-Day Class Number One, All-Day Class Number Two. You'll notice some schools only have one all-day classroom, because they only need one because of the size. So some of the buildings that have two, Springdale, for instance, hit 25 at both of those all-days today, at some point today. And so then there was a parent that's like, "But I really want full day," and we said, "We are starting a waiting list, or we have to talk about a different location." Just because we know as the numbers come. And what we find is we put people on wait lists, we do have people that enroll that never show up. So there's gonna be a lot of that that shifts over these next few weeks. But we're trying to hold to, when those classes reach the capacity that the Board established just for our enrollment period right now, that they would have to start the wait list.
I can tell you, I pulled out of my driveway today, and one of my neighbors backed out in front of me so that I couldn't go. And then she rolled down the window and shouted, "When are you guys ever gonna have all-day kindergarten?" I said, "It was approved last week, you better go to Springdale right now." She said, "I'm on my way."
Isn't Springdale one of our top-rated schools, elementary schools?
Not only one of the top-rated schools that we have, they also were recognized nationally, one of only 28 in the entire country.
And they don't have any spots left?
Nope.
They have half-day.
Half-day. Half-day.
Full-day, I'm speaking full-day.
Well, then, they can direct her to the next closest place.
Yes.
But she wanted to know about all-day kindergartens.
And as anticipated, I've received multiple phone calls specifically about this because of Springdale being closed, because of other people being closed. And the parents understand, they understand, they just, you know, certainly would have liked to have us just add classes there, which, again, as we've discussed throughout the course of this year, we'll have to have additional conversation about that. But I would like to praise the Dora who's out there, as well as Tanya, Ronald, as well... So many administrative assistants for all their help and support getting this done. Tricia Roddy with the all-call, because the all-call was made, that was really critical. It was very quick action, you saw that it was picked up in the newspaper as well. So this is, this was not an easy thing to do, to turn around very quickly. But thank you, Tanya, for leading the way, and Dr. Mary Phillips as well.
It looks like each school has all-day slots available as of August 5th.
Yeah, and again, you know, you'll see these numbers, they're gonna go up, they're gonna go up, for sure.
So with, we printed it, because I was trying to make sure it was ready in time. So to the, the capacity hit, it was today for Springdale. So I'm giving you what happened today for the moment.
Yeah, I just don't understand what the complaint is.
I was just curious, does the district have mailing lists for certain age groups within certain communities?
So like, if there is like a three-year-old, four-year-old, or whatever, no. So we do, again, we push it out social media-wise, we communicate with the rec centers and so forth, try to get that out there. We do have some partnerships with some early childhood providers that understand they're the ones that kinda push the information out to the people, and then they will focus on after-school care because they, they know that as children need kindergarten aids, they wanna get them into school.
I wonder if you would consider reaching out to the faith-based organizations, the churches, synagogues, and places like that within the Princeton School District? And possibly considering, I don't know if people still listen to radio, radio ads or commercials. But I think you guys have done a remarkable job here. I mean, it looks like they are filling up quite quickly. And I'm a little concerned about all the extra space at Lincoln Heights and Sharonville. But hey, like you said, I'm sure it'll fill up as time moves on.
And we'll give a report, a follow-up report in September. I'll do that, so just shoot me that information, I'll make sure to put it in my superintendent's report.
Thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, and thanks to the team.
Thank you. Is there anything else for academic update?
Yes, I'm gonna call up Libby Stiles, Director of Secondary, Teaching and Learning, also Dr. David Maxim, the middle school principal. They're gonna do a presentation on transition. And let me just, let me just set this up for a little bit. And I say this respectfully, I've been, I've been around a long time, and used to consult and traveled all over the country, with middle school in mind particularly. And again, you recognize a lot of different awards for some innovative things that we've done in different places. This is the number-one thing we hear about all the time. It's transition into middle schools, transition out of middle schools, that's critical. Now, with all that being said, we know that we have eight elementary schools. So when you take eight elementary schools, and by and large, you look at the fifth graders, and even in a big school, we may have three sections of, say, 25 or something like that, or maybe 100 at the top we would ever have. But then coming into a big middle school, it is very, very different. So Libby and David are gonna talk specifically about what they do to help the kids, are gonna talk about alternative schedules, curriculum changes, and so forth. So the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, good evening, everyone. I'm definitely gonna do, let Dr. Maxim do most of the talking as he's been intimately involved with all of the planning. But just kind of an overview, when we talk about what's important and what's a priority for our students and for our staff, it has definitely been clear, made clear to us, that as we talk with the students, when we got our youth true survey results, that it is important, especially when, as Mr. Burton said, we've got eight schools coming into one, to make sure that our students have a sense of belonging. And that we work with our students to build those relationships early on, provide them an opportunity to have a voice and express, you know, express their thoughts and on the community that they have within Princeton Middle School. And then with the staff to make sure that they focus their attention on building those relationships early, reaching out to the parents. Dr. Maxim will talk about the parent curriculum night that will be happening before the end of the month to kinda share some different opportunities that we will have to be able to get our parents engaged early on. And I will turn it over to Dr. Maxim.
Okay, thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to speak today, and Mr. Burton. So I'm gonna go ahead and talk about our transition plan that we have in place. So one of the things that we were challenged with, and we challenge with every year, is trying to find a way that we can bring all of those eight different elementary schools into one. So we've created a transition plan, we've always done a summer STEAM enrichment camp. So I'm not gonna read the slides, but basically, it's a three-week program. And let me back that up. I go out to each individual elementary schools, personally invite every fifth-grade student in our district to the camp, get them excited about it, and get them fired up. With certain schools, even Heritage Hill, for example, we provide the opportunity to sign the kids up because of the language barriers. So we were able to do that in a couple of the other schools. So we work with the principals and making sure. So the STEAM camp i- is a three-week program that we have. It introduces students to our academic programs that we use, our math curriculum, which is DreamBox, our ELA, which we are piloting, it's going to be a supplemental, is Beable, which is a career exploratory path that exposes our middle school students right away to career opportunities and the opportunities and the skills that they need. So they get those academic programs. We do extensive team-building and enrichment activities because we purposefully assign students from different elementaries into the classrooms so that they are exposed to students from different elementaries. That's very important. We do enrichment where we expose all of those kids in the summer camp to various poetry, STEM careers. We do a lot of hands-on activity, music, where they get to drum band, the bucket bands, and they have a lot of extra opportunities that we build into them. The best example I can give you about how much the kids enjoyed the camp is that, as you know, we had a power outage here in the summer, and I remember that. And I remember I was sitting outside, because naturally, all of our parents don't get the messages, because it happened at that day. There was a young man from, I wanna say Woodlawn, that came up, rolled down the window, Grandma was driving him, and he says, "Dr. Maxim, what's going on?" I said, "Ryan, no camp today." He looked at his grandmother and said, "Aw, man, there's no camp today." I said, "Yep, we'll see you tomorrow." But anyway, they do a great job with that, and it's always pleasant when I can see the students on Thursday at sixth-grade pickup, and they can point out who their principal is, and that's me. The sixth-grade transition day is a day that we only have sixth graders in the building. We are gonna teach them about our expectations and procedures and build upon the STEAM camp. And the STEAM camp, we did have approximately one-third of all of our potential in enrolling sixth graders at the camp. So that's one-third of these students that have met me, been in the camp, and I've interacted with them. Not only during the camp, did they interact with our staff and get to meet new staff and new adults that are trusted adults in their life when they come to the middle school. I speak to them every week about our expectations, so they're very similar to that. The transition day, we are gonna expose them to all the awesome opportunities that they have. There is also a schedule that I won't read to you because we can all read, but I do want you to know, I meet with them personally, where I introduce them to our school. We explain our homeroom procedures through them. We do team-building as well that day. And I'm gonna go and expand on this. So what can we do to our sixth graders to get them assimilated into our school culture quickly? I think about that every day, I lose a lot of sleep over it because I wanna find the ways that we can get our kids into our systems here. So what are we gonna do for ongoing support? We believe in the homeroom advisory systems that we have at the middle school. Every student starts their day listening to this beautiful voice, telling them and reinforcing the expectations that they get from me, so they hear me every day, as that is the most important. So they hear me every day, as that is the most important thing, that I can start their day on that. So in that advisory homerooms that we have, we also do ongoing SEL, social emotional learning. So we could teach our kids how to deal with conflict and how to resolve issues. We also do, uh, digital citizenship through our advisory as well. We do, uh, quarterly student surveys, that's gonna, I'm gonna go to that. And we also have student goal-setting that we do through student-led conferences that we introduce as ongoing. We do set, we set goals that we monitor with our students, our student-led conferences are student-led, in which they present their work and they own it a little bit more. So as we go through here, I think I hit the summer enrichment camp, uh, pretty well. I won't read you that. We recognized all of our students of the, or campers of the week, uh, so they're really excited and are looking forward to that for the one-third. So again, uh, the summer STEAM camp, oh, and we also have sports that we, uh, we, uh, expose them to through a sports camp as well, where we use a community partner that we, uh, partner with as well. So as we go through here, I wanna make sure, okay, ongoing support and activities. We have, uh, monthly team meetings, sixth-grade transition night, parent curriculum night, August twenty-fifth, six to seven-thirty. I mentioned the advisory, uh, we're, oh, here's, I didn't get to mention this, and it's pretty good. If you're familiar with Ron Clark, uh, he's, you know, a pretty, uh, prominent, uh, school, uh, influencer. We are going to be borrowing a system that they have for sixth grade called a house system, in which we are gonna separate all of our sixth graders into five different houses, mixed abilities. And basically, what we're trying to do, go back to my point, how can we assimilate our students into the culture and feel like a sense of belonging? We're gonna do that through creating a house system, in which students will have monthly competitions, team buildings, activities that rely on them to work with each other across the school. So that, those are just, oh, and through the houses, we'll do, uh, special guest speakers, reward opportunities, camp work, camp joy, winter visits, and really look to expand that and, uh, become, you know, really have a great system where the kids feel bought in. The, and, and not only the kids, the, the teachers as well. So we're gonna have them take ownership of that. So, uh, as we're going through here, ongoing support and activities, this will be close to the end. Be careful if you give me a mic. I can talk all day about the support we wanna give to our students and my passion for it. So we have an intermural program that me and Mr. Weber are producing for our sixth graders. This is going to be where we expose them to every high school club sport, uh, that they have, because we want them to have all the opportunities. So it'll be a four-week roughly cycle, where we basically expose them, like I said, our goal is to get the high school assistant coaches and the athletes down here. Tuesday and Thursday after school, we'll build things like good sportsmanship, teamwork, skill development, and then obviously, the overall competition at the end. So we're looking for that. Uh, the other thing we will work on is, and that's gonna be, we're gonna look at after-school sessions starting in October, and then intertwined lifelong fitness and nutrition topics. Uh, we've, we've been working on grade-level MTS meetings, where we consistently monitor tier-one, tier-two, and all these supports that we do in ways that we can, um, improve that. And the last thing I'm gonna, well, for the ongoing support, I won't say last thing, because there's a whole nother page. But, um, what, one of the things, oh, quarterly student satisfaction surveys. One of the things that we are gonna do this year, just like we evaluate our students on our, uh, in between for intrums and report cards, we're gonna do student satisfaction surveys for our student population, uh, at those same times, where they can evaluate the product that we're giving them to make sure that they're satisfied. So the last one is instructional changes. One of the big things that we put into place is we are giving our teachers more time to collaborate with guidance and accountability as well, to promote them and push them towards pedagogy and skills that are gonna increase our students' abilities. Um, the other thing is, like I said, we're, we're piloting, uh, BEABLE through our so, BEABLE through our social studies department, hoping to take that through our language arts as well. Um, you know, what, we got a reading, uh, reading specialist, a district-wide, and, uh, uh, reading specialist in the, uh, a literacy specialist district-wide, a reading specialist in the middle school, that we're hoping that we can, uh, you know, get in there and really affect the, the quality of teaching that we're giving to our students. So, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and wrap that up, Mr. Burton.
Well, that, no, Dr. Maxim.
No, did I miss something?
No, no, I was just gonna, uh, just add that so much with Dr. Maxim was talking about with the house. So you may remember the team time, team theories and house time. This is all research-based. This has amazing impact for the students. And so on top of the fact that you have, uh, increased, uh, collaboration time, which is critical, it's what gets done during that time. So when you're able to really have four teachers, five teachers, six teachers, they're collaborating and saying, hey, do you have a pro, you know, I have, I'm really struggling with Johnny, who's, who's behind in his work, and another teacher says, "Well, I am two," and somebody else says, "I am three." And then they're able to really kind of put together systemic work, uh, throughout the course of the day. That has great results, time and time and time again. And so I'm really glad to see that. I know we've done stuff like this before, uh, but I know this is a kind of revamped, so I really appreciate that. And, uh, Libby, did you have anything that additional to add with some of the instructional changes?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Maxim. Um, and it, just, uh, to kind of elaborate on some of the instructional changes, in addition to the programs that we have, um, the coaches that we are gonna have, we, we've already had building-level coaches at both the middle school and the high school. With the middle school, we were, um, fortunate with ESR funds and some other disproportionality funds to be able to add a reading specialist and a literacy coach. So that will be job embedded, where they will be able to work hand-in-hand with the teachers on that pedagogy and on those practices, to make sure that what's being implemented in the classroom is effective, and look at that data, and then reevaluate things to determine that, the impact it's gonna have on student achievement. A part of that process, we are gonna, all of our coaches are gonna participate in a five-day workshop with Hamilton County that's specifically around coaching, so that when they are working side-by-side with those teachers, they're asking those reflective questions and kind of digging deeper into some of that information. Um, and we're also going to, the elementary did this, uh, prior to COVID, and we're bringing this to the secondary schools as well, is coaching cycles. We have that opportunity with our tech coach that we have through Forward Edge, and we're also gonna have that opportunity with our instructional coaches to kind of, um, be able to work at a, you know, at a quarter lens versus just the day-to-day, but go through a specific problem that they have, have identified, whether it be an engagement or reading comprehension, and work for an entire quarter to improve that. So we're gonna implement coaching cycles as well, to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck for our coaches.
Thank you.
So in addition to the reading specialists and the literacy specialists and the coaches, will the teachers themselves be equipped with extra skill sets to look for dyslexia or whatever?
Well, there is, the dyslexia was put off for a year, but there is gonna be training, um, the official rollout. But they are, they are gonna start training with the dyslexia this year.
On your clubs, I, I may be out of touch with the times, but, uh, did the middle school used to have a speech club and a key club? Or those high school clubs?
Since I've been here this month, I've not seen any of those clubs offered.
And the middle school?
Thanks. I'm excited for all of, everything that you're saying. It was, it was so much to absorb, but it was, it was all positive. And I don't have anyone in the middle school now. I kinda wish I had a little sixth grader coming in, especially, um, I know, for the intermurals, that's really exciting. And anytime we can give those kids a sense of belonging, that's gonna help them, um, transition, and that's, that's what we're hoping for. So thanks.
And Dr. Maxim, this is, this is off-topic, but once upon a time, I was a sixth-grade language arts teacher. And when, um, the bus came with the new teachers today, the teacher who was most excited had been in my sixth-grade language arts t- class at the middle school.
I know who that was.
He said, "See, see?" So I was happy to see him too.
I do want to get, and I did put this on Twitter, but shout out to the middle school and your PTO. When there was sixth-grade schedule pickup, they had a nice little photo opportunity where they could have little picture frames, put on the Viking hat, and have the, have the Viking to hold in. Some of them needed a little nudging, but they were excited to get their picture taken in addition to picking up their schedules. So that was really exciting.
You know, middle school seems like it would be awfully, uh, challenging because of the changes kids go through normally. So it's quite impressive that you guys have put all these things in place in anticipation, and it's really good news. Thank you for your hard work. I, I was wondering though, there used to be an overnight. Did you ever consider bringing that back? You know, like, like when they brought all the kids together at Relus, it's ages ago. And I'm not trying to take you back in ti- in time and saying, "Oh, the good old days." But, you know, all of these kids came from different communities and knew each other well from their neighborhood school. But, uh, did you, is that ever a possibility?
Now, they do it, they ti- they have done it pre-COVID for the fifth graders. They go to Camp Joy overnight where they pu- they pick select schools, but we have not done that with the COVID, but, but, yes, they've done that.
Is that something you would?
Would I consider that for sixth graders?
For sixth graders, from all over the district. I know it's too soon to say.
I'm gonna jump in here. This is a mu- this is, I don't wanna put Dave on the spot.
No.
But, but the reality, something like this would be a really deep embedded conversation. So there have been a lot of models out there, when you have like leadership lock-ins, and you have people stay overnight and develop skills or whatever. Typically, that's been done at the high school and for different sports teams. We know that we offer a wider array of experiences for the music or whatever, but that has not been in middle school. I'm gonna save you there, Dave.
Yeah, but Dave, I was not trying to put you on the spot, just for the record.
Okay.
I was just trying to tell you what had been done in the past. And that doesn't mean it should be done in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Mr. Burton, for academic update?
No, ma'am.
Um, how about first reading of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, um, Polaris edition for the Princeton Innovation Center?
Yeah, the, the only, uh, discussion on this is, is that, uh, again, as we continue to create opportunities for our students, uh, we look at curriculum, we look at additional programming, and this is just, again, special thanks to, uh, Libby Stiles and Chris Rojas, who really, uh, are, are pushing the, pushing the, the limits. And it's great that we're doing this at the Innovation Center, and it's introduction to industry one. And this is also earlier tonight, when you guys approved the allied instruction, construction. This is, uh, yet another opportunity our kids are gonna have to kind of learn some of the crafts, that lifelong skills they're gonna be able to learn. And if any of our students choose to go on, this is gonna give them, uh, one foot forward.
Okay.
That is all.
And is there a treasurer's report?
Nope. I can pretend. You don't want that. You really don't.
You may want to fill in the blanks. Feel free.
All right, then superintendent's report.
Sure. Well, uh, special thanks to the Board of Education for attending our administrative retreat. Uh, I think I said this before, but, um, I had somebody who transitioned to another school district, or from another school district to Princeton, and they said they never, they've never seen him. Uh, they've been in administrative retreats, they've never seen the Board of Education be there and really take an active role, especially getting to know, uh, our administrative team, and you all saw and found out, uh, why I feel the way that I do about our administrative team being the best I've ever been around, and they're, uh, unbelievable. And that administrative retreat was tremendous for a lot of different reasons, but really kind of, uh, just for the community in and of itself. Uh, obviously, there's some team building, that's, that's critical. We do know that. But really, get dug down deep into a book by Brene Brown called Dare to Lead. And Dr. Mary Phillips is really kind of the leading force behind this, and, and really kind of digging down in this sense of vulnerability. And so many times in life, I think that if, if our country would be able to rumble with vulnerability and be able to have cathartic conversations, uh, with each other, but then on top of that, more importantly, be able to have dissenting conversations and have, do it respectfully, I think we'd be much better off. And I, I think that so many times when we go and we look to make decisions, uh, we really become so vested in our own thoughts that we close our minds to others. And so really be able to have these conversations is unbelievable. And in fact, um, at the tail end of the, of the retreat, we had, we kind of rumbled with vulnerability with, with some expectations that we had administratively from the central office, and it was a really good conversation. We're kind of working through some things though, still, but the reality is, being able to put what we just learned into practice was really, really important for us to continue to grow as a leadership team. And, uh, you guys being there is, it showed the commitment. Uh, so thank you for that. Also, thank you for attending our new staff orientation. Uh, so we're working you hard. So administrative retreat, new staff orientation. Don't forget about opening convocation tomorrow. And, uh, I gave the new staff kind of a little, uh, uh, infomercial, if you will, and I, I just said that, you know, sometimes in life, I don't know if you guys, if any of your friends have ever recently said, "You gotta go to this restaurant, it's unbelievable," right? And you go, and it's not that good.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Just happened to Gina last night.
Mm-hmm, it did.
Uh, for, for us, I said, "New staff, no matter what I say, I cannot oversell what's getting ready to happen tomorrow." From the very beginning, we believe in student voice. I'm gonna tell you this right now. Uh, we have students that are gonna serve as emcees. Uh, we have students that you're gonna hear about throughout the presentation. We have a special keynote speaker, which is gonna bring down the house. We're really excited about the great work, uh, that's done by this person. And it's, it's, again, opening day is like no other. Of course, the marching band, people love that so much. And, uh, I love telling the story. My first year as superintendent, I got on stage and said, "We're not gonna do the marching band." Mary, you remember that? Not gonna do the marching band. Tricia Roddy's phone was blowing up, like, "What's he doing?" This and that, but it was all a, a shtick, and the lights go off, and all of a sudden, the kids come in with, uh, all their instruments with lights on it. And, uh, it was incredible. So we have a couple surprises for the staff. And, uh, also, everybody here, you have no idea what's, what the opening's gonna be like, and it's gonna be something special that you will remember. Um, and then, uh, lastly, and this is something I know the Board of Education's talked about before, uh, and we know that there's been, uh, new legislation regarding, uh, concealed carries and all that. So, uh, I pulled an article here, but also, um, our current policy is that no staff can't bring guns on campus. Can't do it. Uh, that's not changed, and we're not planning on changing it, right, Board of Education? Right? We're not planning on changing that. Uh, but one of the things I think that, so some districts, not many, uh, what they've done is they've passed a resolution to say that they were serious about the policy, right? Essentially, like, we're passing a resolution to say that we're gonna follow our policy. Uh, so we don't need to do that. Uh, obviously, that's board purview, and that can be discussed. But this is directly out of an article, so let me read this. While school boards will not be required to arm personnel, they will have to notify parents if they choose to do so. But we're not doing that. Uh, there's not gonna be a recommendation from me with that at all. And, uh, I've not heard from any board member that they wanna do that. The boards was really stern on this, and they should be. Uh, this also goes on further to say, boards can mandate additional training beyond what is required by the new state law. However, uh, we're not doing that. So the fact of the matter is, the board is, again, has been very, very supportive of protecting our students. Uh, we're not gonna have any guns locked on campus. Uh, and even just now, as I say some of these things, uh, the more we talk about these things, the more questions, uh, that, that arise. But I just wanted to say, from this superintendent's perspective, uh, we believe very sternly in the fact that guns don't belong on school campuses. Uh, we know there are certain laws that there's, we're not gonna be able to do about some things, but you can't bring a gun in school, at any of our schools at Princeton. Uh, and, uh, we believe firmly in that. We're gonna have signs on, we typically have signs on all the schools, whatever, sometimes during summer cleaning, some signs fall off, you know, not just the, "You can't carry a gun on school property" sign, but there are other signs that fell off. Mr. Frick, he's working feverishly at that, in fact, at five o'clock, we were talking about where those signs are. Uh, but we have a great, um, it's already been submitted to the sign company, but like many other sign companies, you know, they may struggle with, with getting those, but tomorrow, uh, if we don't get affirmation or confirmation, excuse me, then we're gonna get those signs tomorrow or the next day, then we're gonna print them ourselves and put them up. But we've always had them, we've talked about it, and, you know, my humble opinion, uh, unless we change something, um, I think everybody knows is our, knows our stance.
Well, may I please say, I was quite impressed by the retreat and the training. You did a great job on that. You, Dr. Phillips, I mean, the whole team. It was just very good. I'm a professional trainer, and as a professional trainer, I saw some good training there. It was really. It was really good to have the interaction between the people. And some of the presenters were just really open-minded and, you know, it was like a learning-by-doing experience. And I, I'm glad as a board member, I had the opportunity to come and watch you guys learn, and then I learned in the midst of it. So thank you for that.
Anything else?
Then the next item is executive session. I move we go into executive session to discuss under Sections 121.22G1 to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee of the Ohio Revised Code.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Mrs. Cleveland?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland, yes.
All righty. Then we shall go into executive session. Will, will there be any action?
No, but I will ask Dr. Jameson, our, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Services, the Resources, to, to join us.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Jameson?